All right, good evening. At six thirty, we'll start this council study session on December tenth. Five of council here, council member Ryan and Driscoll are excited tonight. We've got two items on our agenda tonight, just some kind of update presentations. First up, we have a High Line Canal transition, then we'll give you the front range passenger rail introduction. So I'm going to go over to Jim to introduce the High Line Canal team.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of our council. Yes, tonight we do have an update. That's really what it is. They, as we, I think we all know, the High Line Canal has transferred ownership officially to Arapahoe County. But the Conservancy certainly and the county are both still, well, Conservancy is still very, very involved for a couple of years. And I know that the county and all the various parties are trying to kind of work out a number of different aspects of how things will work in the future. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our guest tonight and our deputy city manager Kathleen Osher. But tonight we have Ginny Pingeau.
Close.
Yes, the director of Arapahoe County Open Spaces and Josh Phillips, the director of planning and planning and implementation for the High Line Canal Conservancy District. So with that mouthful, I will turn it over to the team here for the introduction of the project.
You guys hear the feedback?
Yeah, John, there's something going on with the speaker. I'm hearing all this sort of feedback.
I mean, it's coming out of, it's okay.
I was trying to figure out, why are you here fixed?
Yeah.
Because we sat at the dinner this night.
Nope.
Meantime here, I think we
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys
Yeah, so good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm Kathleen Osher, deputy city manager. I help support our partnership with the High Line Canal Conservancy and Arapahoe County Open Spaces. I would like to note Tracy Young, operations director, is also joining us from the High Line Canal Conservancy as well. And just want to recognize the great leadership and liaison role that council member Pam Grove plays alongside. So we kind of team up to help support our partnership. We're one of thirteen jurisdictions that work in partnership along the entire seventy-one miles, right? Did I do well on my factoids? So it's been a really both years-long process as well as a really deep partnership to provide what is an incredible community asset, not only to the residents of Littleton, but as we stretch along our neighbors up to the north and down to the south. So all the way from Denver County to Douglas County. So it's my privilege to get us kicked off this evening. I think I'm turning it over to Tracy to start or Ginny? Okay.
Turn to her, she's going to turn.
Excellent. I love it. It's volleying.
Oh, me?
Yeah. No, no, you were right. But we're watching our time and we want to make sure we get through our stuff and still have time for Q and A. So we're just gonna just go right in.
So Tracy Young, chief operating officer at the Conservancy. Good evening. I'm just going to give you a quick overview of what brought us here tonight. So in 2011, the High Line Canal Working Group was formed. Arapahoe County and Denver Water got all of the jurisdictions together for the first time to really talk about management, operations, and planning for the whole canal, which had never happened before. And then in 2014, the High Line Canal Conservancy was formed. And that was really to add to this jurisdictional group and bring the voice of the public. In twenty-two, I'm cheating, can you see? This entire partnership
Down on your permanent record.
I know. By the way, we're ten years old as of last night. Or last month, excuse me. Yeah, the Conservancy was formed in November 2014.
We'd love to hear your objections now.
I will. Thank you. Yes. So in 2021, the Canal Collaborative was formed. And this was a formalization of all of these partners getting together. And really, the Conservancy then worked in tandem with the Canal Collaborative to develop two plans. The first was the visioning plan or community vision plan, which led to a more detailed plan, which we called the Plan for the High Line Canal or the Framework Plan. So these plans have been guiding all of the jurisdictional partners, the Conservancy, county, Denver Water, into the future to help us understand management and improvements for the High Line Canal.
Okay. And I'm going to be real thoughtful about the audience too, so I'll project. This slide was really intended to kind of showcase, to be quite frank, the Arapahoe County investment into the canal. I really appreciate Tracy's giving the county credit in helping with the vision and moving it from that irrigation role to more the recreation amenity that we all love and enjoy. But over the years, the county has put a ton of money into the canal itself. For the past several years, we were, you know, invested ten million. Now through 2028, we have another eleven million coming to our partners. And the way, I think you all know this, we like to show up as a county is to augment and support the projects and investments you all and your community wish to have. That's a pretty amazing role that the county enjoys playing, and it is one that we would like to continue playing from this point forward. Now that we are in this ownership role of forty-five miles of the canal, so that's two-thirds of the canal, we are taking on a whole lot of new things that we have never done before, ever. And we are learning from a hundred years of experience from Denver Water. So I think we are at month five now in this new role, and we are swimming fast. And like the things that we just had no idea that we needed to learn or know. So I do also say that in part to hopefully spark some patience and grace with the county, because this is a tremendous learning curve for us. And so some of the things that that, how that feels is that second bullet, that operations bullet. We've had to stand up, we're going to be the ones issuing licenses to your underpasses. We're the ones who are going to be issuing easements. We're the ones who are going to be issuing letters of authorization. So all those things you used to get from Denver Water, you're going to get them from us. And we're going to loop in Denver Water and the Conservancy in that process, but we'll be the ones issuing it. Completely new task and duty for the Open Space Department. And we are tapping into Public Works and the county attorney for a lot of that assistance. And then the other way that we have showed up for years and, well, for the next three years is we have a really good partnership with the Conservancy. For a three-year period, we are supporting some of their operations to the tune of six hundred thousand dollars for that three years. But they're really good at bringing people to the table, creating the sense we all are part, you know, a part of, which is this has got to be collaborative, it has to be a regional amenity, we all have to be in on it. And they're just experts at bringing people to the table, so we're pleased to support them. I think this is back to you, Tracy.
Yeah, and Kathleen kind of did my work for me, but these, we actually are up to fifteen members of the collaborative now. As of the time we turned this PowerPoint in, we've added another member, so Adams County is also on the list. But nobody does this alone, right? This is such a testament to the partnerships of all of the different jurisdictions, including Littleton. And we're really proud of this structure. So in Littleton, there actually are several partners that work together on projects and planning and maintenance. It's Arapahoe County, obviously, Mile High Flood District, South Suburban, Littleton, and the Conservancy. So even just in Littleton, we have a subgroup of the collaborative. That's right.
So now we're kind of jumping into this, we refer to it as our transition timeframe. So you'll, the next several comments will be about the moment we're in at this time. So June thirteenth, we took on forty-five miles of the canal. That is the canal in Arapahoe County and the majority of the canal in Adams and Denver. We also agreed and supported the permanent protection of those forty-five miles with a conservation easement. And that is held by the Conservancy. And this was part of the longstanding vision for the canal. The current transition period goes until 2026, and that's the end of 2026, not the beginning of 2026, December of 2026. So during that time period, thank you, Josh, you know me so well. During that time period, we, the county, knowing that we couldn't just jump in and assume this responsibility, signed an IGA with Denver Water. Denver Water is going to continue their maintenance role. They've taken on for the last six months of this year and then all of 2025 calendar year. So when things still pop up as it relates to the canal, it's still going to be Denver Water that's going to step in and address a tree situation, debris, that kind of thing. And this buys us time as the county to continue working on setting up our processes and procedures and, you know, just getting our feet underneath us about what it means to be in this space. And we're learning all the time from Denver Water. Going right along with us in 2025, the Conservancy, you know, has a stewardship fund that they did get a chunk of money, I think that's an official term, from Denver Water. And they're doing an upfront investment of three point five million to address, you know, some of the issues, debris removal, Russian olive removal, ash tree protection, all of those things. I think they're going to talk about that a little bit more later. And then meanwhile, we have to try to help get that kind of regional vision going for the canal. The Conservancy again, and all of the partners that were at this table for so many years before I joined, knew that we needed two plans in place. We needed a natural resource management plan and a stamp plan. It's a storm water plan, so we can think about how is this amenity evolving? And if we're taking irrigation water out and we wish to support the vegetation, what is a safe way to put storm water in? We need to figure that out. So the county has been one of the biggest financial supporters of these two plans, showing again our investment of how important they are. Full corridor maintenance and use commitment. So you all probably recall receiving a letter from Arapahoe County Board of Commissioners in, I think it was September, basically kind of mapping out our transition phase. And in that letter, we stated that the county would very much like for our partners to step up in a more robust way, and many of you are already there, so I want to make sure I recognize that, from a maintenance standpoint. The reason why this is important to Arapahoe County is because if you'll remember that first slide, we're not doing maintenance now. So all those things that we are funding, maintenance is not one of them. And we have inherited a lot of deferred maintenance in the canal. There is work that needs to be done in the canal. So in lieu of our partners, you know, continuing to come to the table, like they have always done in the past, and we wish that that continues, especially beginning in the year January first of 2027, we may have to look at how we're coming forward with some of our capital investments and supports. So that is just not a decision we have made, but more just kind of playing the years out and thinking through different scenarios. So I did want to explain that, give you the context for that, that letter that I know you guys received. So I think that really covers it, not per? Okay, and then, oh yeah.
When you're finished, I just would like to kind of bring some context for the council to what we're thinking.
Great, thank you, Jim. So real quick, this is just a visual that Josh and team put together to kind of play out the next several years now until the beginning of 2027. It shows you when those two important plans are coming to fruition and, you know, just shows some other great things. So thanks for that visual. Okay, Josh, I think it's you.
All right, and I have a little more in-depth slides, but I'll try to move through quickly, knowing we don't have a lot of time. But, you know, so Ginny mentioned the two kind of management plans that are moving forward now. One on the natural resources side, one on the storm water management side. And I think the storm water piece is really key, where, you know, the city of Littleton has been one of the leaders in that space, taking on this use of the canal as a storm water conveyance and a storm water management system. And so the plan will really help us understand what risks might be posed by the canal, the water quality opportunities, and really understanding the cost of maintenance, as Ginny was just saying, as the management of the canal transitions. And the Littleton map here, you all may be familiar, but these are the maps we've been really using to track that transition of management. And so Littleton has been one of the leaders, as I said, in storm water management, where two of the sections of the canal have been formalized for that use for storm water management. So one is a mile from Windermere Street all the way to Lee Gulch, where the city signed on to maintain that section of the canal. There was a small redevelopment there at Windermere Street. The water was discharged into the canal. That storm water flows in the canal down to Lee Gulch, where it's now discharged. As a part of that agreement with Denver Water, the previous owner, Littleton, signed on to maintain that section of the canal. So South Suburban still maintains the trail, but the ditch, the vegetation, is all the responsibility of the city of Littleton. There's another small section up between the second and third crossing of Broadway here, the mile twenty-three. It was necessitated by a South Metro Fire Rescue Fire Station redevelopment. The folks have been up to that new fire station there on Broadway. Their storm water discharges into the canal, the city signed on to maintain about a half mile of the canal there between the second and third crossing of Broadway. So to this point, it's been kind of this piecemeal transition, as the city has been prepared to formalize the use of the canal for storm water, signing on for the maintenance of that section. I think what Ginny's thinking about is this kind of more holistic transition of maintenance responsibility. And a really key piece of that is that there is storm water in the canal, really throughout the city of Littleton. And that's different in the different jurisdictions, so the storm water management plan will respond to the different conditions. But it's one of those, especially down by Ryder's Vista Park, if you walk down towards County Line, you start to look in the canal and you'll start to see some of those storm water outfalls, those storm water discharges. The beauty of that is that that's the new source of water for the canal, as it's no longer used for irrigation delivery. But the reality that we're working through is that managing the canal as a storm water and a recreation resource will be different than the way it was managed in the past as an irrigation canal with the recreation function. So just a little more detail on the upfront maintenance Ginny mentioned. So, you know, Denver Water continuing their status quo, so through 2025, they're really doing a lot of the routine maintenance along the canal. But as Ginny said, the Conservancy investing a chunk of that, we're using the chunks now, of the stewardship fund, our maintenance endowment that we've established, to really invest in bringing up the level of care for the canal, improving the current condition as the maintenance transitions to local partners. And the stewardship fund, just for more context, was really established to support the basic needs of the canal, you know, leveraging the local investments, not supplanting the local investments in the care for the canal, combines private funding with an investment from Denver Water. So this was a way that Denver Water really invested in securing that long-term future for the canal as their use of the canal changed. But the fund is held and managed at the Conservancy, so the disbursements from the fund are managed by the Conservancy Board of Directors. So we're doing this upfront investment now. The idea would be that in 2026 and beyond, it's providing more of an annual disbursement to, again, really leverage the investments being made by our local agency partners. So same slide as before, but just filling in some of the blanks that were there. The way that these partners might work together in the future would be, you know, the county owning the canal, supporting planning improvement projects, the flood district managing the storm water model, ensuring we're not putting too much storm water in in any one location. They hold a centralized maintenance contract. Littleton already participates in that. So that rather than Littleton needing its own crew to go out and clear debris from the canal, manage trees, there's an option to pay into a centralized contract held by the flood district. It's an amazing resource. South Suburban maintains the trail, and they've expressed a willingness to maybe expand their maintenance to the trail shoulder on the kind of side of the corridor that doesn't have the canal. Littleton maintaining the canal and the vegetation within the city. And then the Conservancy in that facilitation role with the collaborative. And then incentivizing and supporting that maintenance through the investments from the stewardship fund.
So it feels like there are three organizations up there that have maintain as one of their responsibilities. How can I think about the differentiation in those responsibilities for those three organizations?
Sure. So I can go back to the corridor profile is really the most helpful. So right now, and historically, South Suburban leases the trail from Denver Water, now from Arapahoe County, and they maintain the trail shoulder, so about six feet on either side. So when you see benches and signs, kind of the edge of the trail that they mow, that's really been South Suburban's responsibility. It's the remainder of the corridor that had been Denver Water's responsibility. When Littleton signed on for those two storm water agreements, that came with maintenance of zones A, B, C, and E. So the full remainder of the corridor is maintained by Littleton, in that one mile by Lee Gulch and in that half mile by Broadway. And so in conversations with Littleton and South Suburban, I mentioned the kind of canal shoulder. This is one area that South Suburban has expressed an interest in maybe maintaining more consistent with the trail. But the canal and the banks are really part of that storm water function. And so that could be one way to approach maintenance of the canal through Littleton, be for the city to maintain zones A, B, and C.
But you also, the slide also talked about maintenance, a maintenance contract with Mile High Flood District. So help me understand what that means.
Yep, yeah, so they will hold the contract and manage the contractors. Those contractors, though, the work is funded by the local agencies. So they're not a funding partner, but they're there to lend their expertise and their staff time, you know, for the smaller cities that we work with. We know that the staff time is so precious that you don't necessarily have crews that can be out working the canal equipment to do the high hazard removal on those big forty-eight inch cottonwood trees. So that could be managed through the flood district, and that's how it's being managed currently.
That we're doing currently?
Yeah. Just in that mile and a half.
Those have been in place for several years.
Thank you. I apologize.
No, and we're just hearing from the flood district now that they're willing to hold those contracts long-term, which has been a big shift, because that was always intended to be more of a transitionary model. But we've now heard from the director of the flood district that they're willing to expand their role with a centralized contract, which would be just a huge contribution to this regional project. So that's really the heart of, I think, the management maintenance conversation. Always like to end with the fun projects, because there's a lot of important capital improvement work still happening on the canal. Kind of summarized on this slide, but definitely happy to end here so we can take questions with all the time we have left.
Just, if I wave an update for our council, our staff is at the table when it comes to both of those plan, of those planning processes to really get a better handle on the storm water and just the maintenance needs, what a potential level of care could be. We have no funding right now for these, these needs. This is, you know, I just, I hope I'm not mischaracterizing, but there's a lot of, you know, negotiation that still has to happen around the kind of vision that the county and the Conservancy are casting tonight. So in terms of process, we wanted to have this introduction. I know, you know, a couple of the other city managers and I have talked with Ginny about potential ways for consolidating maintenance services. I think that, I think Mile High Flood District is a really good option for doing that. But at this point, we don't have a sense for what the ongoing funding demands could be for the canal. So 2027 is our, our goal is when we will plan to have that handoff. We have that, that goal of June, June 2025 for the kind of maintenance commitment. I think there's a lot of work to be done, and we certainly will be looking to the results of those studies for what the, what some of the funding needs could be. And those are still things that we'll need to consider, so.
So we could get access to this, possibly, negotiations, access to steward fund or county funds or whatever, but that's still being worked on?
Right. I think there's a plan to make some of those funds available, but we're not sure. We don't know that that will cover, that's, that likely won't cover the ongoing annual commitment for maintenance that I think is being outlined tonight.
So we'll have to put some in our budget?
Perhaps. Likely, if, as we're hearing it, outlined.
So, so, it feels like there's two different budgets that we need to think about. There's a maintenance budget, which keeps it operating from year to year. And then I think, and I apologize, you.
Ginny?
Ginny, sorry.
You're good?
Thank you. With the French name that's not French is confusing to me.
There.
But confusion is a common status for me. But the main point is that you also talked about unfunded maintenance. And so we need to be thinking about our obligations around both operating funds and unfunded maintenance funds. And then, speaking of fun things, what if we have, I mean, I think we already on the council have ideas around storm water needs, but what if we have fun things we want to do with them? You know, we decide we want to put in a play, a water park or something on, you know, on that property. What's the kind of leeway for kind of doing fun things on that land? What are, are there opportunities, I guess, for increasing outdoor activities beyond the walking path that is there right now, is what I mean?
Yeah, I think, you know, the first thing I would say too, we heard in the visioning process for the canal, loud and clear from the public, that the number one priority for the canal is keeping it natural. And so I think all improvements really need to be viewed with that lens. And so I think all improvements really need to be viewed with that lens. Uh, you saw a photo of that Lee Gulch lookout, an improvement that we just worked on with the Littleton staff, South Suburban and the county. Uh, and so we had some ideas for a slide and other play features, and the feedback from the neighborhood was, you know, boulders and log steppers, you know, shore nature play, but maybe not something like a playground feature. So, um, I think that's a really important piece. The residents in Littleton are really connected to that historic, natural character of the canal, um, which is defined by the, the tree-lined corridor, um, and the natural resources. So I think that's the other piece where, you know, we got to view stormwater as well, uh, not just as liability, but also as an opportunity to maintain the ecological vitality through the corridor. So, um, I think there's a lot of interest in the natural enhancements, but I think in Littleton in particular, uh, it's, yeah, it's a balance where I think those kinds of, uh, kind of maybe park features, uh, might be viewed a little bit differently. Uh, the other piece is the conservation easement that Tracy can speak to.
Yeah, um, and when the property was transferred to Arapahoe County, at the same time a conservation easement was placed on the entire forty-five miles. The conservation easement on the Highline Canal is a little bit different than conservation easement on an open space property. Out, you know, out in the, outside of town. Yeah. Um, or, uh, uh, anyway, um, for lots of reasons. One, there are hundreds of neighbors adjacent to the canal, um, and also, um, it's very urban. So it, this conservation easement allows for recreational uses, it allows for stormwater, it allows for utilities, it allows for any improvements that have to do with public safety. So it's, um, uh, it's fairly permissive, um, and the types of, uh, improvements that you're talking about would be allowed by the conservation easement, as long as they didn't interfere with any other values.
Thank you.
Just a fun factoid, as the new owner, we inherited over one thousand encumbrances from Denver Water. This is like Comcast lines going under the canal, all these pipes.
Merry Christmas.
I know, I know, exactly.
You didn't even know all that you've got just yet.
Right. Uh, uh, we, we had to do environmental analysis to see if there were some old superfund sites that might, um, implicate the asset. I mean, it was just, um, it was massive, massive.
And, um, the, the last slide I have on there too, I do want to really highlight, um, you know, tree planting. That's, you know, again, the, the biggest priority that we hear from the Littleton community. In twenty twenty-one, we began planting more drought tolerant trees along the canal, really focusing on a future with less water in the corridor. Um, and so this is a volunteer tree planting in twenty twenty-one. Uh, an exciting development is some of the jurisdictions along the canal have been looking into permanent irrigation along the canal as a way to better support the establishment of new trees as there's less water in the corridor. And so that's a, a big project that, uh, the, the conservancy had some funding left from a grant, um, and, uh, the city staff were able to apply for an Arapahoe County Open Spaces grant. And so there is funding in place, uh, funded by the conservancy and the county to install the first irrigation line along the canal in Littleton. Um, it was identified by the previous city forester, who I know has since left. And so, uh, we're excited to work with the staff now to kind of continue to move that project forward. The grant award was just finalized. And so that's actually between the second and third crossings of Broadway, kind of between Euclid and the third crossing of Broadway at Kayleigh. Uh, it's one of the lower canopy areas, both on the canal, but also for the city more broadly. And so it's identified as kind of an equity need there. And so there's funding to both prune and remove hazardous trees that are remaining and aging in that section, but also to put in an irrigation line and irrigate new plantings. And so just to say, you know, we've been working really closely with the staff and I think leveraging some of the funding that both the conservancy and county have been able to raise from the public, that really does want to ensure the canal continues to be this thriving ecological corridor. And in Littleton, I think really a tree-lined corridor as well is really what we hear from the public. So just wanted to share that, because it's a really exciting improvement, uh, that hopefully will be implemented next year.
And I'd like to say one more thing about the fun things, if you don't mind. We do, we meet with Littleton staff every year.
Which is very fun.
Yes, that's super fun.
So true.
And, and, um, and look at a work plan, a five-year work plan for projects, um, that, that your staff is looking to complete. And, and we talk about how we can work together to get those things done.
Steve?
Yeah, no, I, uh, I was gonna start kind of diving into the both, like, the timelines for both the capital and the operational, you know, planning and whatnot, because, uh, you know, I, as I was talking to some of you before, prior to the meeting, um, we are also in the process of looking at our current stormwater, uh, rate structures, what our capital needs for our buried infrastructure looks like. This is obviously going to fall into that and more. Um, and so in this transition period, so twenty twenty-five, Denver Water is gonna, business as usual, um, through that course of time. But especially, I think the conservancy probably has the best optics on what are both the biological, as well as the stormwater, kind of planning needs per acreage, per mile, per however you want to measure it on the canal. So where, where are we at in terms of just like how much people power, type of staffing, type of activities being performed per, uh, segment? Where are we at in terms of that understanding?
We're gonna turn it over to Josh for that one.
Right, yeah. So, one piece, and I know with your stormwater background, one area where Littleton is very fortunate is that there isn't, uh, existing risk of the canal overtopping within the city of Littleton. So that's one of the issues that other jurisdictions face, is that in a hundred-year storm event, there could be so much water entering the canal that it actually is at risk of overtopping its banks. It's part of why the flood district's role in this is so critical to understand that inflow and then the outflow of the water. And so I would say from a risk mitigation standpoint, Littleton's actually in a really good place. So it really then is more of that routine maintenance of tree care, clearing debris from the channel, treating invasive weeds. Those are really the three main functions that Littleton benefits from the current flood district contract. And so that cost is somewhere around maybe fifteen thousand per mile per year. And so that's where, you know, right now you only manage one and a half miles. Over time, you're looking at five and a half miles, so there's an increase there. But I do think that from the kind of staffing capacity and maintenance piece, if you're able to leverage the contractors through the flood district contract, uh, it may not be as significant a need for kind of capital improvement and retrofit of the canal. It is functioning fairly, uh, well right now as a stormwater conveyance. Uh, one of the plugs, one of the fun things is if you get down to the Lee Gulch flume after a storm event, you'll actually see all the stormwater that collects in the canal, leaves the canal there, the flume, back into Lee Gulch. So that's the idea, is that it's not that water is coming into the canal in Douglas County and Highlands Ranch and Littleton, and it keeps flowing north, it's that the water is actually returning back at these natural waterways and reconnecting water with the drainage ways. So right now, with the water that does come in between Dak Clark Gulch and Lee Gulch, between Lee Gulch and all the way down to Big Dry Creek, um, the water piece is actually, uh, I think, looking pretty good for Littleton overall.
I mean, I'm actually kind of surprised at how little that maintenance cost actually is. Like, is that kind of an appropriate amount? Like, are we actually spending? I mean, that's, that's been our utilization of those contract mechanisms to date. But are we actually spending the amount necessary to keep the, at least the three main functions that you described? The debris management, the, uh, canopy care, and the invasive species management at bay? So are we spending the correct amount in the places that we are currently? Or are we, like, way shorting ourselves in terms of those O and M activities?
Yeah, we'll really look to the Natural Resources Management Plan, because I do think that partners were really focused on kind of that minimum level of care, kind of, yeah, keeping it at bay. I think the plan will give us some ways to maybe elevate that investment that could enhance the level of care that we see for the canal. But yeah, I do think that we're kind of achieving maybe a, a compliant level of service right now.
Okay.
But we'll have opportunities for more. And I think that's a really key piece in working with the county, is that, you know, the goal really is to cover the level of service that's been provided historically by Denver Water. And they manage the canal differently, because it was a irrigation delivery function. So they cleared debris from the canal when they were running irrigation water. They weren't out necessarily every spring, taking out every downlog and every tree. And so as the use changes, I think that's where the management will need to change to fit that use.
Okay. So I think that's. Makes a lot of sense. And like, it, it's good to have that kind of frame of reference for those, those kind of critical areas. But it does sound like that, even if, you know, we were to extrapolate that number to the asset in its entirety under our jurisdiction, it's still like, I, I mean, quite frankly, I'm just gonna say that De- Denver Water underfunded its maintenance of the asset, right? And so if we were to keep that same level of care, we might keep the same frustrations and, you know, pro- kind of problematic areas that we've had encountered. None so critical as to, like, threaten property. And that's actually, I, I, you know, I'm not trying to put you on the record or anything like that, but in our jurisdiction, are there areas where we have public right-of-way, uh, underpasses, abutments, things of that nature, which is under Littleton's, uh, jurisdiction, that are kind of under threat from that deferred maintenance, where they intersect? Do you, do you have an idea about where there's capital needs or capital deferral on our side of the right-of-way?
Uh, that is an interesting question. I don't. I know from the stormwater management plan that there's not current risk, but yeah, not from the kind of status of some of the infrastructure. You know, one of the projects the city was working on is like replacing a vehicular bridge over the canal, so at Windermere Street, actually. Uh, so there are city assets that cross the canal. That's one of those thousand encumbrances that Jenny referenced, that Denver Water would have licensed the city to put a bridge over the roadway. So there are other assets at play beyond just ecological, the stormwater, uh, that I definitely can't speak to, but yeah.
I, I wasn't sure if you happen to know, have, I guess, in the conversations with our team and our staff and over your years of experience, have identified areas where there's like high risk or high threat of kind of loss, uh, in terms of like infrastructure damage and whatnot?
No.
You know, our bridges are, we're, we'll get to them. Thank you.
Yes. No, and I'll, and I'll say for South Suburban too, that, you know, they've been working to upgrade some of the older pedestrian bridges as well. And, you know, with the, the recent news, you know, we understand how important these neighborhood access points are to residents who want to get to the canal. So, uh, Arapahoe County and South Suburban partnered to replace the Bannock Street Bridge up closer Broadway. We were a funding partner on the Alani Street Bridge replacement, which is another that comes in from a neighborhood there at South Bridge. And so I think there are some aging pedestrian bridges. I think of that Footbridge Park is one, or by Heritage High School. Um, you don't see new pedestrian bridges going in with the full concrete decking. And so, you know, I think those are some of the assets on the rec side, uh, that there's a, a capital cost that will be needed in the future. But that's been part of the planning effort. You know, this is, as Tracy said, kind of that five-year snapshot, but the plan has, you know, a lot of additional projects that will be coming. So that's a, a piece of this, is how do we kind of fit that into this mix?
And that's South Suburban's CIP, that those assets are falling into right now, the pedestrian bridges and stuff like that, also, also like major trail maintenance and, and the like.
Yes, yeah.
And I will say, Mayor Protam, like, the, the conversation at the leadership forum, um, and among senior staff and, and technical staff is really squarely about how much context has changed. You know, so while Tracy's alluding to a five-year plan, the context has completely changed, right? So achieving that level of maintenance, there is a desire from all thirteen jurisdictions to make sure that we have continuity across all of the Highline Canal. And so being able to achieve a certain level that everyone's comfortable with is a lot of the conversation. Now, we've completely turned some of that context on its head. Um, so now, as we all sort of elevate our desire to maybe work beyond that base level of service, um, these plans are coming at very critical points in time, uh, to help inform both what the costs are and then really where we can achieve that sort of consistent look, feel, and continuity of the experience for all of the users.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and this is all kind of leading to us trying to project in the long term what kind of, you know, our investment needs are gonna be. I mean, it's awesome that the county is able to throw down and, and co-fund some of the capital needs and whatnot. But I don't, a- and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, given the, uh, specious look on your faces, when you talked about getting a whole bunch of information from Denver Water, we don't really have capital asset information or even like condition analysis of that random block of concrete. What does it do? Is it a gate? Is it a weir? Why is it there? Anything like that? Uh, i- in terms of that level of detail, do we have anything like that in terms of like the actual capital that's in the right-of-way of the canal?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
The, the flood district is on a channel assessment in kind of a, more of a dashboard view. And so there are ratings on some of those infrastructure pieces. But it's another, as you start to look in the channel, I think of by the Lee Gulch flume, where it takes a bend as it comes out of flume, and there's just concrete reinforcement there that some ditch riders would have added in the canal that isn't necessarily a part of the documentation that Jenny received as a part of the transfer. But, uh, we do have, yeah, uh, you know, documentation of where it is and what it is and the current condition.
I'm so happy that somebody's actually got like a what it is and where it is, at least, which is, I mean, like, that's a big part. I mean, it's, it's, you know, a number of steps till we have like utility crossings, things of that nature that we'll need for our public works team in terms of where that sewer line went. Or when you removed a tree branch and we poked a hole in something, do we need to fix it or fill it with concrete? Like, that's kind of where I'm going. So in terms of that capital planning, is the county gonna be in charge of putting together, like, the larger capital plan? Like owning essentially the asset database that extends throughout your jurisdiction? Or I guess, who's gonna own that piece of information?
Uh, are you talking about, um, the current kind of Denver Water, um, capital items in the canal?
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I. Or any items, yeah. Yeah.
Um, so, uh, mm, we have not gotten around, we are pedaling fast on so many other things.
Sure.
But we, we have not gotten around to even thinking about that, I'll be quite honest. Um, a lot of the times, we are having to go back and pull the licenses to things. Like, an example would be a pedestrian bridge over the canal, um, actually closer to the Denver city and county side. You know, that was put in by an HOA. That HOA is no longer in existence.
Yeah.
So, so these are the things we are uncovering, like, every single week, quite frankly. We did not know, right? So now we gotta get, um, find the HOA that, that we got this asset, and we don't know. Does the license we have that we inherited from Denver Water?
Yeah.
Does it cover, um, did we have a new HOA step in? All of these things.
I was gonna ask if you would come up and talk too, but I guess where I'm getting at is that y- you mentioned that you're like, you're uncovering or discovering, like, that bridge was put in by these folks.
Yes.
And, and that entity dissolved kind of thing, so it's an orphan or whatever asset. But you are collecting information, like, is that just kind of piecemeal going through what Denver Water currently just gave you? And doing some, like, putting eyes on it, verifying?
Like, we did not ha- we have not had the luxury to be holistic, um, of the way that I, ideally, one would be.
No, it's okay. I mean.
It's more just like, okay, what's this?
My questions are not to blame, but to figure out, like, what are the gaps of information and who's supposed to take them?
There are a lot of gaps.
Yeah, that's one click on the question. So what is the source of the water for the irrigation? Is it potable water from Denver?
Yes, yeah. So new irrigation lines would require purchasing taps, um, as a part of the project. That's right. Yes, yep.
No more questions for me, problem.
I don't know.
On this one.
Yeah, so just to add, so.
Yeah.
We do have a, a good handle on all of our major structures that cross over the canal. So, um, as a part of a C dot program, you have to rate all your bridges that are twenty feet or wider. So any bridge that we have that goes over nee- over the canal, we have an assessment of the structures. And there's two that come to mind. We're gonna be replacing the Windermere Bridge over the Highline Canal next year. And then I believe the next one is on Gallup Street, which is ju- just the, just, I guess, east, the next east crossing. But I think the rest of the structures along the Highline are in good shape.
Okay.
It's these kind of minor structures, like the pedestrian bridges and that kind of stuff, we probably don't have a handle on that.
Yeah, and that was kind of where I was going, is because, you know, this, the canal and, and the, now the Arapaho right-of, well, I mean, whatever. Yes. In that right-of-way of the canal, it's just littered with stuff. Like, it's gate valves and weirs and like infiltration points and stuff like that. And is that gonna be on, I mean, obviously, we have an asset management system for our current infrastructure and our stormwater infrastructure. Are we gonna own the collection of that information? Or are we gonna house it? Like, who, I guess, when it comes right down to it, because, you know, it's nice to know that the operations, like, we're starting to get a han- we have like a pretty decent handle on like the biological and that routine maintenance stuff, even at the minimal level. But it's the deferred maintenance on all those things, whether it's repair, replace, demo, whatever it may be, that we haven't built into that funding stream yet. And I wasn't sure who was gonna be the one going out and saying, that pipe is this? And it's in your database or your database?
I, I would say that all of our stormwater infrastructure will be in our database.
Right.
And I know that we have a couple of the, the, I guess, the, the gates are in our asset management. We don't really do anything with them. We know where they're at, right? And I don't know what kind of condition they're in, but.
Right. Okay. This is, it's, it's helpful to know.
Great questions.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and I do think the flood districts are really a key partner in that too. They manage that, uh, canal-wide channel assessment. It's a really good example of the collaborative partnership where they collected funds from all the local jurisdictions, whose stormwater managers were there wondering, what's that gate for? What's the condition of that drop structure, that wall? And so I think the flood district's gonna be. And so I think the flood district's gonna be a really key partner in that and figuring out, is that housed centrally? Where's available to all of the parties, the county and the local jurisdictions? It has become really more local assets over time, so I think
Is it part of that stamp plan, right? We're actually going through and figuring out the operation and maintenance as part of that stamp plan through the flood district.
So it it is, uh well, I guess, is like acquiring and like classifying and grading and assessing all these assets, is that part of the stamp? I I would have assumed that the stamp was a a lot more kind of superficial in terms of its O and M type, like dredge here every X number of years or weed here every
Right, I mean, it would probably be focused more on the stormwater structures, right?
Right.
As we mentioned, the, we have, what, a mile and a half that we're responsible for now? And then we'll go to what, five, five, one million acres? So we we don't have that big of a section luckily, right? We have five miles, so.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, but I think what we're all grappling with here will be, I think the stamp plan will direct us at what that long term data housing system is. Like, how do we coordinate on this across the different parties that touch the canal? And I love that slide with the the five agencies that are touching the canal here in Littleton. And so I do think it may not necessarily be assessing all of the infrastructure, but it's okay, we've got the channel assessment from twenty twenty one. Where does that live now? Does that live in the Mile High Flood District system? Is that dispersed out to the locals? So I think we're grappling more with the management discussion and then, right? Do you then assess the those assets every five years, every three years? So there's a lot to be operationalized here that you're asking the right questions.
This really sounds like a governance problem. And
Yes.
until you get the governance problem solved, the rest of this is not gonna be completed. And so what is the process for solving the governance problem?
Uh I'm sorry, used to questions you said, so.
I know, I failed. I'll pay my penalty, everyone can have a piece of chocolate. But and that was really more of a comment, quite frankly.
We'll we'll hope by January one, twenty twenty seven, we'll have a lot of answers to that question.
Cause that feels actually more important than than if you want to get the governance right, everything else.
I think that's kind of the point that I would also kind of build on is that I think it's gonna be challenging for the for the cities to have those kinds of commitments until the governance structure and the costs and those things are fleshed out. So that's something that we'll continue to talk about. But for the 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 council, I just wanna I wanna outline that that's a lot of information yet to be filled in.
And I guess my my questions around a lot of that asset and data information, condition analysis, does lead to that because when we come down to that governance question and we don't know what we're eating, like, I mean, I know you've done your review of how many superfund sites are currently in the middle of the canal, but like if we don't, if we acquire an a an onerous number of assets that poses potential risk to other infrastructure or downstream homeo- homeowners or something like that, that's uh like, that's a risk that we're acquiring without quite knowing what the ramifications of it are.
Um I would, I would say that uh um I feel the same way, Arapo County.
Well, I know you've just acquired all of them, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um but your your questions are spot on. And um the county definitely took a leap of faith in this space. Um there's a lot of, after a hundred years, I'd be just like, let that settle of Denver Water maintenance and operation. Um you know, they did the best they could. Um there are some things that were left to be desired. And um uh uh we, um I think, as a county, had heard from enough people around the High Line Canal table, wanting someone else to jump in there and be in this space.
I'm so happy you did.
I um yes, uh so yes, the
Dive it into an empty swimming pool, it's dangerous.
Yes, um so um uh but it it is, uh you know, we don't have all the answers and we are definitely muddling our way through. And uh I I joke with the conservancy that we know how to do the Kiowa Creek open space. We know how to do Bijou Basin open spaces, where we're doing, you know, trails for bikes and walkers and picnic tables and emptying the trash. Now we're dealing with HOA pedestrian bridges for which we don't have an HOA. Like, you can see how we're, we are um way out of our swim lane and we are um swimming fast to hope that we, we wanna do a good job in this space. Um but it is a a your, your consternation and kind of questions of uncertainty is spot on and it is something we feel regularly.
I think to balance some of my caution, if I I may, Mayor, Mayor Protam, that the studies that are in the works are gonna, you know, are gonna help a lot and they're gonna answer a lot of these uh questions. So while there is a lot of uncertainty there, I think we are certainly confident, we are thankful uh for the county and the conservancy, um you know, working together with us on this. Um there's just a lot of work yet to be done. I think the, you know, systems are in place to figure it out. Um but I I think, you know, your uh questions are on point and illustrative of the breadth of of work that still needs to be done to figure out how we're gonna all walk forward together long term.
It it almost feels like, I mean, I, we need a gov- we need a governance plan and we need a risk management plan. And those two things feel, and we will, not a detailed risk management plan, but at like a high level, these are the different sets of risks we're facing. And these are the different sets of people who are currently hold, people, meaning organizations, that are currently holding the bag. And these are the risks that nobody's holding back. And and that, those two, th- tho- doing those two pieces of work feel crucial and really inner, like, you gotta do those two things to 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 be able to do everything else. Uh and it sounds like I'm preaching to the choir. You're welcome.
Because, oh, so go ahead, why don't I just move on here?
I'm done, I've been done twice now, but three times.
All right.
Well, I was just gonna say, thank you for the presentation and there's lots to unpack here and lots of questions that hopefully we can get answers to most of them in the next two years here. Um but great.
Keep asking the questions, cause it helps us, does, helps us guide us in our next endeavors.
It would be great to see you again, coming on, like, yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be the whole contingent. I know it's better as a group, but like, you know, at least on a regular basis as the governance changes, as like the phone numbers to call to get the tree removed or the dead animal removed or the whatever done in the canal. As that changes, the more you can update us as council. I know you work very closely with our public works team, but it it's really important for us to be able to, because we get public feedback on things that happens often and we need to know where to go.
I love that you said that. I can guarantee I'll be coming back by in about a year. Um I did um initiate these meetings and because I knew how important they were. Um and uh the conservancy staff was ready to jump in on them with me. So um thank you for the invite and we will be back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're gonna have a major part in trouble, season just says.
Say, Kane, come here.
I know, I know.
Good job, I appreciate your work.
Well, we have maybe no superfund sites in the canal.
All right, next item up, we have a uh presentation, an introduction from the Front Range Passenger Rail.
Are you the slide advancer?
Can we just call it the Littleton Choo Choo Hall?
Littleton Choo Choo, no, we may not.
Different, but equal.
What's better for you?
Should come to you, well. I know, I keep looking in your direction and throwing you You're gonna get me started.
Thank you so much. I can assure you, most jurisdictions are not this generous.
We are very generous, we are totally welcoming.
Do not say that to the front range passenger rail.
You're wearing a successful and crossbow sweater as you speak of your generosity behind us.
All right, I'm gonna turn to
Little Suburban.
Jim to
Thank you, just
Real fast to pay for a station.
Me, um we're joined tonight by Chrissy Bright, Chief of Staff for Front Range.
It's not a promise.
For the Fr- Front Range Passenger Rail District. Um it's an exciting uh concept for the whole Front Range. And um our staff has been, has been also at the table for this project. Um and I would just note, uh our deputy city manager again, Kathleen Osher, and also Kenneth Davis, our 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 transportation planner, um have kind of been been leading our work at the a staff level. But um certainly, we, we know that this is an important uh prospective uh project for the region and we just really wanted to know that the mayor led the kind of uh charge to really have an introduction tonight so that our council's uh plugged in. I think you'll find that there are, you know, similar open questions on this item as there there were on
I thought you had a final plan and everything was
One of those good lines, I should have walked out, I like her.
But we just would like to bring this and kind of start the conversation here. So I don't know if if uh if Kathleen or or Kenneth have any further introduction, but I think Chrissy will lead that.
Yeah, I I would just add, um you know, the Denver metro region is a a smaller piece of this overall effort. It's a statewide effort, so um we really appreciate Mayor Protam and through that Dr. Cog conversation, um helping keep Littleton a part of how things are moving forward. I think Kenneth and I have been sort of tag teaming many of those staff communicate, or staff conversations. Um most recently, a a great conversation at the staff level uh that was facilitated through the Colorado Association of Transit, State Transit Agencies. And so it's been a good opportunity for us to continue to, you know, sort of think and and understand uh where the district is headed. So uh Chrissy's been a great partner in uh keeping us up to date. And so we're, wanted to give you this opportunity to kind of share more about the journey you've been on and and kind of what you see moving forward.
Awesome, well, thank you all so much for letting me join you tonight. Um I love that you said the phrase, start a conversation, cause I had the same notes on mine, so I'm glad we're on the same page. Um I just wanna give a quick kind of starter about what I'm looking to share today, just really start the conversation, introduce the project to you all, talk about some of the work happening regarding station planning. Um Littleton is an exciting place because you identified as one of our primary station markets. So you're a community that we consider um worthy of stopping in, so we're excited to talk to you today. And then to talk about what we're working on as part of our look ahead. Um they say you should always start with your why. So as all of us that have been in Colorado know, we are a rapidly growing state. Um Colorado had about five million people in twenty twenty, expected to grow by three million people to in twenty fifty. Um we recognize that our roads and our highways were not built for this kind of growth. Um and even if it was, there's always the challenges of maintenance, of operations and of um safety in terms of roadways. And so in this kind of challenge, we see opportunity, we see an opportunity to create a new option for safe, efficient, reliable travel, to support job growth and global economic development, to help mitigate congestion, support air quality goals, and really to expand access to housing and employment options. We recognize Colorado is not only rapidly growing, but also very quickly becoming more of an aging state and as people are aging, as people are struggling to afford to live where they work and live where they want to be, passenger rail's an opportunity to kind of bridge some of those connection challenges. Alrighty, I'm flipping this, but I gotta flip this as well. Um so as noted, it's a proposal, right? It's an idea for a new intercity train service when we don't currently have in Colorado. Um it is a statewide initiative with a goal of having service between Fort Collins through Denver down to Pueblo. We have a very, very long term vision of one day reaching New Mexico and Wyoming. What makes our project unique is that we're looking to interoperate on existing freight tracks, like those right outside your back door here, so we can minimize the cost of the service and accelerate the start date. Um one thing I really wanna underscore is that our service is really meant to connect everybody. This is not your commuter train to reach work, though it could be. It's also how students that live at home, that were raised in Littleton, can reach um CU and CSU and how they can afford to go to school there but live at home still. Um it's how people can reach sporting events throughout the Front Range and kind of concerts and things like that. It's how people that are aging, living in Pueblo, can reach medical centers in Denver. So really meant to connect all kinds of people in our state to all sorts of opportunities. Um environmental and safety benefits is a big reason, part of our why. Um we will be starting likely with um diesel trains, just gonna come out and say that. We are exploring opportunities to become zero emission as service advances. I had the pleasure of actually being in Pueblo at the Transportation Technology Center, a federally run transportation incubator, and got to ride a hydrogen train, that's the train on the far right. So as we look to kind of start service now with what's in front of us, we're expe- we're exploring what can be done in the future to kind of improve that zero emissions goals. Um then again, as part of the safety benefits, you know, reduce congestion on highways, reduce crashes and reduce road maintenance costs. Um as a local jurisdiction, it's really exciting, cause this is for you, has an opportunity to bring in new visitors, which means it expands the tax base, expands the economic opportunities. Really excited to work with organizations um and throughout the Front Range to really help kind of build that community benefit. One of our upcoming initiatives we're working towards is actually an economic benefit study, to be able to really quantify what does a passenger rail service bring to the state, to local communities, so we can help kind of work in partnership with you all. All right, as mentioned, I am from the Front Range Passenger Rail District. If you look to the map, I represent the blue taxing district that kind of swirls along I twenty five. We are by geography, the largest special district in the state of Colorado. Um we have been given the statutory direction to plan, design, finance, construct, operate and maintain a passenger rail service along the Front Range. Um we are presented by a twenty four person board of directors. Uh you guys are best represented through your four Dr. Cog representatives on our board. Um we collaborate deeply with C dot RTD, the Federal Bureau of Administration, to work to bring this project to fruition. Um one of the special statutory powers we have is to, we are empowered to refer a tax to voters within that blue area, which will be key to kind of realizing this project. You might have said, twenty four, who are these people? Um twenty four people is ten MPO and TPR reps throughout the Front Range. We have six gubernatorial appointments, uh C dot's on our board, as well as seven ex officio members representing freight railroads, RTD, Amtrak, um and our kind of nearby state partners. So as someone said beautifully in the previous presentation, I think a lot of the details are still being defined, but the vision we have right now and that we're working towards is nine initial primary stations. So that's the the call out boxes on this map. Um looking to initiate round trip service by twenty thirty five. Um we will be improving the existing freight tracks to be able to handle fast, faster passenger operations, probably up to about seventy um seventy miles per hour max speed. What that equates to is Littleton's Denver Union Station in about twenty minutes. Um and then again, being that this is different from kind of an RTD commuter or light rail service, typical station spacing is about every twenty to thirty miles, which allows the trains to reach higher maximum operating speeds. Um so what's really exciting, as I mentioned, is that you all are kind of what we see as a primary station market. Right now, um C dot is working on a service development plan for the project. And what that is, is a pre-NIPA, pre-environmental clearance feasibility study that really looks at kind of demonstrating to their federal partners, this is a quarter worth investing in. As part of that analysis, they have analyzed a station at Mineral as a prospective passenger rail station. Um and just to give you a sense of kind of what is in that analysis, it just shows a kind of how Mineral performs and these various um factors for, you know, station feasibility. Um what's really interesting to see is that about one fifth of all riders for the system are expected to board at Mineral. So you guys have an incredibly um proportional kind of high usage at your station. Um what I do wanna note is that this is a feasibility study, it's mostly a desktop analysis. We recognize that for these stations to become real, it has to be done in part of the local jurisdictions. Um and so I say that because, slide two. I have been chatting, as as Kathleen said extensively, with Kathleen and Kenneth to kind of bring your local staff into the conversation. Um what we, there are various levels of station and and conversation engagement. Um you know, at a, at a base level, your team is reviewing that feasibility study and giving us comments in a memo form beginning of next year to make sure that your community's um kind of technical analysis is shown in that planning document. Additionally, there are always opportunities to do more advanced local station planning. Um yours is unique in that we have identified Mineral as kind of a prime location, but we also recognize that as a community, you may want to do planning of your own that identifies other sites to consider. Um obviously, those would be sites that need to be worked in terms of operations needs. It couldn't just be, we wanna have a site in a greenfield thirty miles away, but I know that also different conversations about potentially downtown as another viable site. If you did wanna do additional work, we'd like to support you in terms of additional station planning that could then be brought forth into the NEPA process later on. Um so I just wanted to say that for now, you know, you are on the map. We are working with your staff to sort of get your thoughts incorporated into a pre-NIPA memo and then look forward to working with you as we advance through the project development process. It's funny, I was thinking about, do people know what NEPA is? But then I heard your questions earlier and I was like, do people not know what any of this is? But essentially, what I wanna communicate is that
You shouldn't think of him as
You shouldn't assume, no.
Don't, so just don't assume the rest of them, yeah.
We're not all, um, we're not all engineers, okay?
We all have our unique skills, guy.
Love that, and you're the governance gentleman. So I think what I wanna just communicate is that
She said gentleman.
We are
She doesn't know you.
We're candy, we're making progress and we also have a lot more to go, which is exciting. So we are, we have this taxing district established that provides a governance structure. So we are, we have this taxing district established that provides a governance structure and a way to really raise sustainable funding. We're working on our feasibility planning. Then we go to the environmental clearance process that has the much deeper community engagement to really define the project that is then brought forth into construction implementation. So we are having such a conversation now, looking forward to continuing to stay engaged throughout the life of this, of this project. Just to wrap it up and take some questions, you know, our two-year look ahead is a bit of everything. It's trying to do the economic benefit study, it's doing conversations like this, introduce the project throughout the corridor. It's 180-mile corridor, working on local station planning and then working on kind of initiating that NEPA process. I think what I just want to share again is this is a really unique opportunity for Colorado. This would be a new, fast, safe and reliable transportation option. We, as many states are, are working to hold down what remains of the bipartisan infrastructure law funding and continuing to work in advanced federal partnerships in this space. And we are just really excited to serve the Coloradoans that we have now and then also build for the Coloradoans in the future. And I am happy to take questions.
So do you, how do you envision this station to look like? We have the light rail station at Mineral. Is it a huge enhancement? And then the second question is, who pays for it?
Great questions. So I think that what we envision as kind of a base program is a platform that would be similarly situated to the one you already have. I think that we want to make sure people can get to and from the platform safely. Ideally, that the existing parking lot that's used for the RTD Mineral Station could also be used. The local communities want to go above and beyond and they want to build an actual station structure that perhaps they maintain, they have staffing for, that is local community's own prerogative. But we are not expecting that of communities, nor at this time are we funding that level of extra infrastructure.
And I would just add, we're in a unique position because, you know, January of 2005, there was a crash that changed federal regulations of light rail being able to operate in freight rail corridors. So we're one of the last, I think, that operates that way. So our ability to serve both light rail and a commuter rail on those freight rail tracks is something that's unique to really any station that is being explored as part of.
So we use our current tracks?
So the current freight rail tracks.
So the light rail tracks.
Oh, the freight rail, okay.
So, but those platforms could, you know, interface with each other, which is unlike, you know, when you look at other metro area, the way the stations are set up in Denver or potential stations in Boulder or Longmont, which would be the other metro area ones, they would be solely in freight rail. So you would not have both technologies, both train options kind of available as a passenger.
And it's exactly because of that connectivity, which I think is in part why Littleton is such a high projected ridership base, because you do have that light rail feeding into that passenger rail station as well.
So you said the words pre-NIPA. But when it gets to the actual submittal.
Yeah.
Like, what are you projecting in terms of timeline? I mean, this is, this is amongst the most time-consuming. I mean, it's not an Army Corps project, but beyond an Army Corps project, it'll be the most time-consuming process that the district will go through.
Yeah, I think what's interesting about this project is that because we are looking to interoperate on existing freight tracks, the actual amount of impact is much less than many transportation projects. And so we are, it will likely not be.
I mean, of no significant impact.
Well, not no. It will not be, it will not be a, you know, you know, God willing, it'll not be a EIS, very robust. It'll be a higher, a higher level. It'll be a less in-depth form of NEPA. I can't give you an answer yet as to terms of when things officially be done, once service will officially start. A lot of that is based upon, basic decisions have not been made yet, as well as the need to secure funding. We can advance planning.
Sure.
And eventually need money to really construct. And coincidentally, when you get more money, you can also do things faster. So we're still working through that dynamic.
Absolutely. I was just trying to get.
Yeah.
Yeah, concept. And actually, you touched on one of my other big questions because again, we're kind of like, you know, this is like space shuttle level planning, where you like shoot something really, you know, shoot at something really far away and you hope that the celestial bodies ultimately intercept each other at the correct time and place and function. And the, you know, for us, you know, a lot of it is not dealing necessarily with the rail in and of itself, but the planning, zoning and usage.
Yes.
Around that. And you, you mentioned that it's unlikely that we would have to be acquiring right-of-way or anything like that to expand to allow for it. Not just at the station, but I mean, along the, the actual freight line.
Yeah, it's a great question. So just to get super technical and nerdy.
Please.
So, so there are existing freight tracks that we will operate on. There will also be areas whereby we will need what's called sightings, which is kind of a track next to the main track whereby the freight train can pull into, his passenger train can kind of pass by it.
Yep.
Our hope is the majority of those sightings can be located in existing freight rail infrastructure. I'm sure, I'm sure there are areas where we will need to get additional right-of-way, additional kind of, you know, space. But for now, we are confident that we can accomplish a lot with an existing right-of-way, which is exciting.
Okay.
And also this will.
Yes, still to be determined, but your hope is that a majority of these of the sightings, that you're going to be able to operate in the existing right-of-way as you currently have it. So it's not necessarily going to be incumbent on us to go out and essentially acquire right-of-way to allow for it. Or I guess not acquire right-of-way, but to create the space necessary.
Yeah, yeah. That's a great question. I think that we're still working through those kind of details. But again, I think as Kathleen was noting, what's really unique about Littleton, just from your own kind of primary responsibility perspective, is that you already have a station footprint. And so that makes it really unique in terms of needing to preserve land to develop that kind of infrastructure.
So, but it sounds like what we should be thinking about is, what is the land use around the current station? What's the availability of that land? And how do we want to, what kind of party huts do we want to put up there?
And yeah, that was, and that's exactly, I think, where the next part of that planning zoning conversation is coming from is like, is front-range passenger rail going to be able to, essentially, since you own the studies in terms of use, utilization across it, are you going to be waiting for your numbers in terms of like?
Interesting.
Ridership, things of that nature, so that we can make sure we set aside the correct footprint to accommodate that? Because it's one of our fastest-growing corridors, both from a commercial and residential perspective. And I'm all for making the space, but we need to know how much space to set aside.
But if you say zoning, will there be duplexes or triplexes?
All of them. Sorry. After January. Anyway.
And I, I think that is another kind of unique aspect of where we sit is that, you know, some of that early station area planning was happening back in 2006. And, and part of some of that work related to the passage of Fast Tracks, Dr. Cog making funds available, the Denver Regional Council of Government making those funds and grants available to do some of that work. So we sit well positioned for, for having some of that station area planning and some of that land use work that now is coming to fruition.
But we still need to get like the numbers from them essentially in order for us to make sure we have that, you know, set aside essentially. Because if not, we, you know, it's not going to be this council that's approving it. It's going to be multiple iterations of council in the future who have not been at this conversation. And if they approve a bunch of duplexes to, you know, over top of area that we actually need for expansion of the platform, parking, whatever, other infrastructure, bus infrastructure, then, then we've done ourselves a disservice in not setting aside that, that land use.
That's our group.
This is very specific. I realize you're at the vision stage, but have you thought about parking before the pandemic? We heard there's no place to park. And now we're putting this on top is, have you thought about a parking structure there at the Mineral Station? Or is that just too premature?
I think that's on us.
And parking is just, I think the rail is. I mean, we're gonna fight.
I didn't hear a fight there at all.
To speak for the district here, the idea is basically they'll deliver rail on a platform. Everything else is kind of more on the local entity there.
I think that's fair to say. Our goal is to design a local shareback to help provide support to locals to make this happen. But generally speaking, we are excited to bring people to you and we're looking to you to help us develop the vision for how they get to the station, what they do once they get off the station.
I heard they're paying for the parking.
Yeah.
And I do, I do think that that's where.
So we get a grant.
Their partnership with, with RTD and RTD's participation at, at the board level has been incredibly useful, right? Because there, there is parking there. Would it be adequate to, to meet the ridership needs? I mean, that has fundamentally changed. The utilization of, of that parking is fundamentally different than pre-pandemic levels. So I think RTD is really coming to the table and being very creative about what the current utilization is and where there are opportunities to be flexible. So I think that's something that we continue to work with them very actively. I know the work that Ken is doing with Arapahoe County on sort of micro-transit and/or services that are feeding in and out of our other, you know, north, south, east, west lines is a piece of that too.
Yeah, yeah, I would say on a couple of things. I think Mineral, we're, we're well-positioned with just the current size of it and their overflow law. And so there are opportunities that we could look at structured parking in the future if, you know, we determine there is a parking need there. As Kathleen mentioned, Arapahoe County did receive a tip grant. We are waiting to start on it, but it will be a county-wide transit and micro-mobility study. So we are looking at, you know, connections across the county. And that's, we're really looking at that as the first step to look at our, our transit in the city and what's the solution? Is it a partnership, you know, countywide or with Inglewood and Sheridan? Is it, you know, something we want to do more internally of a shuttle or micro-trans or whatever that looks like? And so, you know, that's definitely all part of this conversation. And I think the other pieces too, we're doing a lot of mobility work around the Mineral Station right now that will set us up for front-range passenger rail in the future, especially with those bike and ped connections along Mineral, both east and west of Santa Fe. The, you know, Santa Fe Park Development and the new cycle track going through there and trail connections. So we're doing a lot of mobility work too that will set us up for the future.
There may be a solution that is not available widespread today, like what you're talking about. So that makes a lot of sense. I mean, why throw up a parking structure if people aren't parking there?
Right, yeah. I mean, that is, that behavior is the one that is the current one, right? Like that park in right the system. But then, you know, the, the opportunity to study at that county-wide level to see what, how you can create those different behaviors, you know, with the, the timeline, because this really does, you know, anticipated to start north and then comes south. So we're on that.
That was my question. So, you know, the 2035, you know, daily service, that was, was that full, all nine stops? Or is it started with the, the north quarter? And I know there's different histories and constituencies, north and south of Union Station.
Our goal with that Littleton would be served by 2035. So that would be the kind of full quarters, the goal for that date.
That would be the whole Pueblo, Workon.
What is, obviously all this is contention on further funding.
Yeah.
What's the ballot schedule looking like? Whenever, whenever, I mean, there was, how's, what, what are some of the questions you're thinking? And when might you be going out?
Yep. So the current direction that our board has provided staff is to consider going to the voters of the district in 2026 for a ballot initiative. So that's what we're currently identifying right now.
And then with the, I mean, getting all this up and running, you need a train set.
Yes, and the lead time is, is not insignificant.
We, we don't have a train set. You don't have a train set currently, do you?
Correct.
It's on order. What, no, everything is on order. What is the timeline for getting? I mean, is that even feasible with, I mean, I've heard.
No, that's a great question.
Other people say trains are 15, 20 years out.
I haven't heard that bad. You're right. I have heard closer to the five to 10 range in terms of what it looks like. We are working with, with our board to understand opportunities to, it's gonna sound really funny. It's kind of, sort of opportunities to perhaps partner with Amtrak in a way whereby we can be added on to the orders they're putting in right now as part of, they got a lot of funding through IIJA to start doing orders. So that when we're ready, we would already be in the slew of things that are being manufactured. So we're looking at opportunities like that to ensure that we're not forgotten in this unique opportunity to actually get those trains procured.
Looking for a second. I know Charlotte area, they have trains on order.
Charlotte has, on order, you said they have some?
They said, they said they order them. They have them on order. But they don't have the funding yet either. So there might be, maybe they don't.
And they're selling their trains that are.
Maybe, they may be selling their trains in the next five to 10 years.
Can we get them? It feels like there's gonna be a lot of coal trains that are on the market soon too. So just use coal.
I'm not sure there's a connection, be they able to reuse them.
It goes choo-choo and it'll chug-a-chug-a all the way we want it to go.
How is, I know, obviously, different discussions up north.
Yeah.
But how have kind of the rollout for all the communities, especially the nine identified stops? And I know there's lots of other communities saying, hey, what about, what about us here? How is the, the communication going and how are things moving along in that aspect here?
Can you reset your question? I think that the, the rolling of the trash can.
I'm just, I mean, you know, you've, you're meeting here with Littleton here, one of the nine stops. I know all the other communities are also interested in, you know, we kind of heard about this. I know I've talked to some other electeds in other cities like, well, all I've heard is what I see in the news. I'm trying to figure out how this, the communication is going here with all the communities and how, whether there's buy-in or pushback or other communities trying to lead fraud.
That's a great question. I think you're absolutely right in raising the challenge of a, of having robust communications through such a large corridor. That is definitely something that we are experiencing. I think that every community has its own unique flavor, its own unique story, which is really exciting. But I would say broadly, there is an interest in this project and I think people recognize the value that it can bring to their communities. And so I think people are trying to figure out how do they fit into this picture? And it's a picture that we are still ourselves forming. But I would say that it is, it's an exciting time to talk to communities as people seem to want to hear from us. I'll say that. Yeah.
To kind of wing on the governance question and representation in the process. I mean, I, like, I understand the major transportation districts and Dr. Cog are really the ones getting things, you know, lifted off the ground and whatnot. But as stations, you know, as you're, as the maybe map of stations becomes a certainty map of stations, like, do you, do you anticipate or see potential for change in governance, structure and makeup? Because it does make sense that the, the communities that are bearing a brunt of both the kind of immediate needs in terms of transportation facilitation around these stations have at least some degree of, you know, input more formally at the table rather than the circuitous way of going through our transportation districts. And I'm not trying to like throw sharp elbows, but like I can, I can see a future where that change might be necessary.
Yeah, I mean, it's funny to, I worked in Chicago before this, before this gig, working on a 20, 25-year-old collaborative partnership to decongest the Chicago Freight Rail Network. And it is funny to look back at the original MOU from 2004 and then to see how things evolve. And so I think I, there's a recognition, of course, that any new enterprise, things will evolve. I can say at this point in time, our district board is not running any legislation, as staff knows of yet, about governance. But I think any major enterprise evolves and so I'm certain that things will probably evolve.
Is the governance structure in the legislated governance structure?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
More questions?
Kenna, do we know how much space we're supposed to set aside?
Yes, you know, the, the district has been really great in giving us some guidance and they even like wrote a scope to do, you know, if we wanted to use that to do some early station area planning. You know, as we've mentioned, I think we're in a unique position because we, we have some station area planning already completed as part of, you know, the light rail station. And so obviously there, there is some more to do and we recognize, you know, the challenges, I think, with the pedestrian bridge over Santa Fe and the capacity issues with that and obviously working with RTD. So we are tracking that. I think luckily, the, the piece of land is really not being developed where the station would go primarily. I think it's, yeah, looking at the broader, the broader station and what's happening on maybe the other side of Platte River Parkway potentially.
Yeah.
So we, we are tracking that, obviously.
Thank you.
Questions? Great.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to hearing more news over the next, uh, like. Champagne when we get NEPA for.
With.
Yes.
Thanks, National Fire Model Protection Act.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Alright, I'm gonna move to this Assistant City Attorney for any update reports. Now's your time to shine.
I have nothing.
I think I don't have anything either, Mayor.
We're just gonna mention, oh, so we were gonna, just updates council. I know I sent an email yesterday about the vacancy process. I just wanted to verbalize it for the record. I just wanted to verbalize it for, um, the record. Um, you guys all had the applications, uh, we had twenty-one, uh, applicants for the position. It closed, uh, Tuesday, it was on Friday, a couple of days ago. Um, so I think, uh, the goal is to get this, uh, someone hopefully identified, uh, by early, uh, January. And so, um, we're gonna move forward and have, uh, staff is gonna do an information session for all applicants on Monday. Kind of just a, a pre-training, training, kind of just say, this is what, what's involved, some of the big issues. So everyone that applied is, um, you know, is getting through the ground running. Um, we're gonna have this on our general business item next week, next Tuesday. Um, the goal is so we can start figuring out who we're gonna interview. And so if we can go through and go through, I mean, I don't think we have time, um, to interview twenty-one people. Um, I know Aurora, when they did this, they had thirty-four applicants and they brought in three people. And so if council can take a look at the applications and get back to, uh, city clerk on, uh, kind of who, um, you want to bring in, you can have as few or as many people as you want. Um, my goal would be to have, try to be, you know, five to six people that, uh, we want to talk to a little bit more. Um, but if we can get all of our kind of preferences back by, um, Monday, ended business date on the sixteenth, so Tuesday clerk can kind of tally those. So on Tuesday, um, evening and during ours, we can kind of talk, kind of look at that and say, hey, this is what we're gonna, uh, move forward with that. Um, and so we can deliberate that on Tuesday and provide, uh, staff direction to, um, schedule interviews. And then, uh, we'll, I, ideally, the eighth and ninth of January, uh, that, that second week of January there, we'll figure out what schedules work, but with holidays like that, but that's, that's the goal with that. And then, um, hopefully we can have those interviews that week. And then on the study session on the fourteenth, um, kind of work through our, uh, preferences and have staff, direct staff to get someone ready to, uh, uh, appoint and swear in on the twenty-first. Does anyone have any questions or concerns that work? And, and, and just for the record, council member Wright is not reviewing or interviewing people since it's in the charter as the remaining, uh, council members, so.
To my, thank you very much for all that work. I'm very excited that we have so many people who are interested, I think that's really good news. The, I just hope we may consider maybe we don't need thirty minutes of questioning for each one, maybe twenty will be enough. But other than that, I think we're in great shape.
No, we can, we can discuss that, I think, you know, when the boards and commissions is, we usually do ten minutes and I think especially for a council member, I think.
Yeah, no, it's, we, we're stuck with them, we need to.
At least for, at least for ten months.
Yeah, no, I mean, but it's, it's, it's exciting, we had so many people interested, I think that's really good.
So you're thinking about, uh, we should recommend about five or six, because we don't know.
I mean, if you, if, we don't know, and I, you know, um.
And we don't have to stick to the exact.
We don't have to stick to the number and, you know, I, I talked to Jim, I actually talked to Steve about, you know, do we want to say, but there's six of us. Is it, if three people agree on someone or, I mean, that could have ten people that three of us say, oh yeah, we, we want to hear more from this. If there's three or four people that all six of us say, maybe we can just whittle them down, there's, you know, to try to be as efficient with our time.
It's kind of approval voting.
Kind of, it is kind of, it is kind of approval voting. And I didn't want to have a threshold because I didn't know if we would have consensus, um, one or two people or if, if three or four people might be as much consensus we can get for at least the interview stage.
And I, and I walked into these conversations with Kyle as well, like on, you know, aiming for that number of people. But I, in my brain, I thought if there were at least four of us that in, or at least a person getting four votes from us independently, um, would have had them cross the threshold. We might end up with none or we might end up with, you know, sixteen people. And so I think, you know, the point with this is that we also have that kind of open discourse on the seventeenth to say, you know, here's how the votes tallied and this is kind of the way it broke. And if we were fortunate enough to say like, yeah, there's five or six people where there were four or more votes and it falls out nicely that way, great. But we can also, I think at the seventeenth, uh, you know, alter our formula, so to speak, to say, yeah, there's enough support for enough more people or fewer people, um.
Sometimes we, I, we've been in situations where somebody makes a case and we go, okay, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
We're flexible for that.
So we're the eighth or the ninth, we don't know yet?
We don't, and that, I, that was just the.
Depends on the number of.
Yeah, depends on the number of people, depends on their schedules, depends on our schedules. But that was, I think we have it on our calendars, eighth and the ninth.
Did we finalize the in-person versus Zoom versus a special, um, interview schedule? Has that been?
Uh, we didn't know who we would have. And so I think preferences would us be in, us be in person and if someone was out of town or couldn't make it those two nights, we could have them zoom in. Um, I don't think the goal is to have us do it all Zoom, but have it open, have it open here, have a TV up, like we've had people come in.
Okay.
Do it that way. So I think we can be as flexible as possible, but see what everyone's schedule availability is. All right. All right, I guess we're adjourned.